We'll have a moment of silent meditation then a pledge to the flag. Thank you. I.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good morning. It is Wednesday, November 20th. It is 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners here. And we will start with consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have six exonerations for 2006-06-50 minutes for November the 13th, 2019. Vouchers, General County Fund, 117,854.91. Cole Severance, 356.57. 911, 19,003.1486. Chestnut Ridge Park, 8,321.80. Camp Muffley, 4,0286.25. Mason Dixon Park, 347.45. Assessors valuation, 6,794.84. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, 31,254.24. Cole Severance, 111.69. 911, 11,006.09. Chestnut Ridge Park, $270. Camp Muffley, 962.45. Mason Dixon Park, 117.73 for a voucher total of 201,601.79. We have budget revisions that require state approval for the general fund, county commission, ag agent, dog warden, dams and dredging, and fairs and festivals. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Mon County Planning Commission, Montague County Development Authority, Mon County, I'm sorry, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandoned Dilapidate Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, and the North Central West Virginia Community Action. Judiciary orders for November 20th, 2019, and then you have a separate petition.
Okay.
Move for approval with discussion?
Second. Tom moved in second.
I just wanted to point out that these budget revisions we're doing, and we say this when we're doing the budget process about how we're, you know, we hold the commission as tightly responsible to our budget as we do all of our agencies, and then when we move money, we put it in contingency fund, and we move it over. This is a perfect example. We have to come to a public hearing. We have to move money from our contingency fund. This is the one for the, uh, dog warden?
Yeah.
That we're moving the funds over for the dog warden. So it's something just kind of goes on behind the scenes, but it's an example of what we talk about during budget time that, you know, we hold ourselves responsible, just like we do everybody else. So I just want to point that out.
Okay. So probably move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Second, we have a petition for removal of ExecuX.
Executrix.
That's close enough. I'm not real good at that. Estate of Dewey, Elefritz. What I'm going to ask, because I see both attorneys here, this isn't a hearing, but if, since you are both here, if the first person who's the petition for removal would like to come up and speak, state your name, who you are, have them go first, and then you would have the other person at the time, since you are here, so.
We're just looking for if you want to provide an explanation.
Yeah, explanation. That would be great.
Okay. My name is Robert Pevler. I am the attorney for the petitioner, Landon Elefritz, who is here today. The basis on the petition for removal is that the Executrix did not follow through on several directives of the will pertaining to some pieces of real estate that were to be left to my client, Landon Elefritz, as a Uniform Transfer to Minors Act gift under the will. That the, we also asked for an accounting of funds that were received as rentals based on accruing from those properties. There's a tenant on one of them. There is property that is stored on those lands that we don't know if there's been any rent received for that as well, and based on the fact that a appraisement and non-probate inventory of the estate have not been filed in accordance with the timeline set forth in the code. Since the filing of this petition, the parties have been in contact. We believe that there are avenues to resolve this without having to go to a hearing before this commission, or at least to narrow some of these issues down to the points where there is still dispute. We would like to request that this be appointed to a fiduciary commissioner.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, good morning.
Good morning. Tyler Slavy. I'm counsel for Crystal Elefritz, and everything Mr. Pevler just said is accurate. I mean, I didn't become aware of this petition until Monday. I know it was filed last week, but we've already had some discussions, and I'm hopeful we might be able to resolve this matter completely, and if not, I'm certain we can at least resolve some of the issues that are alleged in the petition. So I agree with Mr. Pevler's sentiments, and I think this matter should be referred to a fiduciary commissioner, but it's very possible we might be able to just work this out without even taking up any of the fiduciary commissioner's time.
Well, let me ask you a question. Is there a timeframe which you think that this could be worked out?
I mean, we'll know within the next couple of weeks whether we can come to a resolution.
So like if we were to consider just...
Four weeks from now.
Setting this aside for now, making a decision on a petition until, rather than give your chance to resolve, then there'd be no need for petition?
Right.
That would be fine with me.
And the fiduciary.
Yeah.
We would hold off till...
And the assignment to the fiduciary.
That's absolutely fine with me. Now, obviously, I'm not the person who filed the petition, but I have no problem with that, because I think either, you know, this time next month we'll have it worked out, or we won't, quite honestly, so.
Robert, you want to?
Would that be?
Yeah.
That'd be acceptable. I'm trying to think with the holidays, if maybe instead of four weeks, if we do six or something that...
Say the first of the year.
That's fine as well. Absolutely.
Okay, so why don't we put it on the agenda after the first of the year? If you could get back to Renata to find out where you're at, then we'll be more than willing to work with you, because it sounds like many of the issues could be resolved.
The first real meeting in December and January would probably be the eighth. So if we said to come back to this body by the eighth, and whether, you know, or let us know if the petition's withdrawn, or if you still have issue, you still want to move forward with elements of the petition, and then we'll consider that at that time. Is that acceptable?
Absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Well, we appreciate it, both parties. It's rare that we have both attorneys working together with a smile. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have anything else on the consents and approvals?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing then we will go to introduction of new employees. Are there any introduction of new employees?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Let's go to comments from the public. If we have anyone who would like to make a comment, if they could come down, sure, feel free, come on down, state your name, your address, and we'd love to hear from you. Good morning.
Morning.
Hi.
Morning. My name is Karen Kelly King, and I'm the coordinator for the Thanksgiving dinner, which we'll be having next week. I'm not here to ask for anything, but if anybody wants to donate any money, I'll accept. When we started this 11 years ago, we had 29 guests and 60 volunteers for the week. Now, last year we served 700, excuse me, 657 meals.
Wow.
And that includes dine-in, that includes takeout, that's delivery to the homebound and to all of the first responders. This year, we're hoping to get over 700 meals served. We will probably, for the entire week, have about 100 volunteers. We have, one of our goals was to make sure this was a community event. It wasn't just a Wesley Methodist event. So we have people all over that volunteer. We have restaurants and grocery stores who donate to us. We have individuals that are donating, so we are self-sustaining. That was our second goal. So I just wanted to let you know that it's a success, and we are hoping that it will continue to grow every year. Well, every year it does grow about 50 to 70 more meals than what we served the previous year. This year, probably will be serving, baking probably 30-plus turkeys.
I apologize. Could you say where it's at?
It's at Wesley Methodist Church, right across from Panera.
Okay.
And we, on Thanksgiving Day, people assemble. We put the meals together for delivery.
Okay.
And those go out between 10:30 and 11:00. Then at, no, excuse me, they go out between 10:30 and 12:00, and then lunch starts at 12:00, and it is free.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Tom, I'd like to request that we can suspend the rules so that we can engage in a dialogue.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. It's very nice meeting you. I've heard about you for years. I've listened to you from afar.
We've listened on your end.
I'm very impressed with what you've done, and every year how your program has grown, and I would certainly, you know, be interested in how I could donate, participate when available, if you have any information regarding that.
I have posters, and I have a letter. I'm always prepared, you know.
Yes.
And I got, the media has been wonderful to us also. And I have to say this, our co-sponsor is Chili's Restaurant.
Oh, really?
And they, this year, they'll probably give us about 200 pounds of mashed potatoes. Plus, they give us all of our paper products. We have several grocery stores that give us cards, you know, and so we're able to redeem those. So we, as I said, it's free, and anybody that stays there can come and get as much as they can eat. And we pray every year that we have enough food for everybody.
Yeah.
But it's been wonderful. You know, like whenever you plan anything, something always goes wrong. So last year, we did run low on potatoes, and we had to run and get some instant potatoes and make them quickly. But it's a joy to do this. And I think if we can remember that Thanksgiving is the one, it is my favorite holiday, because I think we have a lot to be thankful for. But it's the one holiday where you have certain smells, certain foods that are associated with it. So it's not just for the homeless or the low-income. We have families that come and spend the day. We have families that come and volunteer. We even have a family that does all of the kids' activities. And so we're just really thrilled that the community has, is learning more and more about this, and we appreciate the help and the interest.
Well, that's one of the things that's most amazing, is of course you do a wonderful job pulling it all together, you and all your volunteers, but it is amazing that the whole community, you know, everybody, the stores that give their part, the, you know, the entities that help contribute, really is a wonderful event. And again, I've been trying, been wanting to put your voice with the face, because I've been listening to you for years.
Yes.
Well, I tell you, I'm trying to maintain my charm, honey. And my age is about all I got, so. But it's nice to be here, and thank you.
Hopefully, I'm hoping the numbers will be down, only because, as you heard, the pension plus more like your idea, so we're handing out, we did 365 turkey meals dinners. So hopefully, maybe they will not have to come to you.
Oh, no, we want anybody to come, honey. It looks good for us. We're not successful if we only have 27 people.
No, well.
But the community camaraderie.
Yes, it's real.
Yeah, and you can, and we, when people come in, we want them to, and we always make sure we have the tables separated, so that you have to sit with somebody you don't know.
Right.
You know, and so anyway, thank you for letting me speak to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. We're most appreciative.
Thank you. And I am taking care of your first responders.
Oh, wow.
I've already, I've already got most of the calls made.
There's Mr. Smith back there.
Jimmy Smith is back there, so you might want to talk with him if you missed any, if you missed anywhere.
I don't think so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else? Before I close it, we have an honored guest here, and I'd appreciate if Vivian Parsons would come down, former executive director of the County Commission Association of West Virginia, who's been an integral part in making and moving the county commissions forward in our state. So, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for an opportunity to speak with you, kind of impromptu, but I miss all the folks at the counties, but I was able, by taking the job that I now have with the West Virginia Risk Pool, to take the best parts, I think, of the job with me, and that's being able to get out and visit with the county commissions. As you know, I spent 23 years with the County Commissioners Association, and seven and a half years with the Association of Counties. So with my 30-plus years of county government, it led me to where I am now, and that is the public entity specialist with the West Virginia Risk Pool. I was around about 13, 14 years ago when we started to put the pool concept together. It was a wonderful idea then to try to stabilize our premiums from year to year and provide a good service to county government, and we're in our 13th year, and it remains a good idea and a solid investment. Mon County is one of the newest counties to come on board, and we are so happy to have you. Right now, we represent 50 of the 55 counties in West Virginia through the Risk Pool. We have about 112 county entities. That would be like PSD, Solid Waste Authorities, public, your Economic Development Authorities, organizations or boards, authorities created by the county commission doing county work. Most recently, the Board of Directors has voted to allow us to also write proposals for volunteer fire departments. With the increasing workers' comp premium issues for VFDs, it is something that the Board of Directors has continued to look at and feel that now's the time to allow us to expand into that area as well. Speaking of the Board of Directors, as you know, the pool is different from commercial insurance in many ways. And one of the ways that it's different is that it is governed by a Board of Directors made up of county commissioners across the state. As a member of the pool, we have an annual meeting each year in September, and as a member of the pool, you will have the ability to vote on who serves in those Board of Director positions. There are seven members to that board, and they make decisions, informed and advised decisions about the pool's activities. As a member county, any excess funds are not shareholder product or to, you know, stock investors. Those are owned by the member counties in the pool. So any monies that are not needed for claims processing and administration of the program are assets of the members of the pool. They are, again, very different from commercial insurance. Another way that we are very different, that I feel privileged to get to deliver this information, knowing county government and finances as they are strapped sometimes, and counties always having to do a lot with a little, is the training side of the Risk Pool. In order to keep those premiums steady, one of the efforts of the pool is to put a lot of time and effort into training to minimize your risk potential. And we have several workshops that are available to come out into the counties and provide. I'm going to mention a couple of the hot topics today. I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but remember first that all of these trainings are provided to the member counties at no cost to the county. And the trainers from the pool come to your county to do the training. We will spend two, three, sometimes four days in a county, rotating employees in and out, because we know you can't take everybody away from the front desk, you can't take law enforcement off the streets. So we will rotate folks in and out and provide the training in rounds and meet the needs of the county member. One of the trainings that we've been doing as of late, unfortunately, that we need this, but is active shooter training for the courthouse employees. I just heard recently about another shooting in California, in a school in California. So the sign of the times, but we do have former law enforcement trainers that we work with. You know Steve Rawlings, who spent some time here with you. He is a former state trooper. I don't know if you knew that, but also a former teacher in his life before the insurance world. But we have some retired law enforcement that helps us provide our training. Another is cybersecurity. I think it was 2013, one of the other ways that this pool operates differently is when we try to be on the cutting edge and proactive. And back in 2013, when we started to hear about cyber attacks, some of the assets of the pool was taken to add cybersecurity coverage into your policy at no additional cost to the county. So you do have a $250,000 cyber coverage in your policy. There is a max of $1 million annually on that coverage. So it is something, if you have several counties who may have claims, that it might be something in the future you wanted to look at to silo through us, your own security. But we can talk about that later, and we can visit about that. Right now, it's $250,000 that was provided at no additional cost to each of our members. And this training goes hand in hand with that. It is an ever-changing training, because the methods that these folks who carry out the cyber attacks is constantly changing. But again, we put this into place in 2013, and up until this past year, we hadn't had any claims, which is wonderful. We were ready. We've had a handful of claims now. And so the cyber training that we provide is not for your IT folks. They're on top of that. They know what's going on. This is for folks like me, your county employee, your average employee who sits down at county computers, what to look for, what not to open, sites not to go to, what's happening out there that they might be aware of, the phishing scams, social engineering, all these different things that are happening. That's what this training is for. And it's about an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes. Mike will bring his crew out, and again, they'll do it in rounds for you, if you, for whatever employees that you want to include. But you're only as strong, you know, all the security that you put in place is only as strong as the human element to that. Somebody opens the door by just clicking on something that looks legit and can open you up. One of the things, before I leave cybersecurity, that just happened at the pool, that I find a wonderful asset, thinking about when I was a member at the association, we've just picked up a cyber coach. If you would have a cyber attack and you contact the pool immediately that there's been a breach, and then you call this cyber coach. And she is an attorney, and she will, I mean, the last situation she worked with was on a Sunday afternoon at 3:30 in the afternoon, so always available. And what do I do first? What do I do next? Who should I contact? So it's a coach to walk you through those steps, and that's another member service. Bloodborne Pathogen Training. Now, this is not your first responders. They know about this. But if you have folks who keep your county grounds clean, parks and rec, this is, we're trying to target those folks, what to do if you find drug paraphernalia on the county property. Unfortunately, those are things that we have to deal with in this day and time, if you find needles. How do you protect yourself, protect the county's liability to dispose of those things? So that's another training that we're providing. Workplace harassment, this is a training that probably most of you have been through several times. Workplace harassment, sexual harassment, bullying, those sorts of things. The pool recommends every two to three years that you have someone come in and provide that training. No matter how good of a job you're trying to do, everyone, there's a possibility of anybody being sued. And when you are sued, this is a great defense to have in your back pocket. We have a policy. We follow our policy, and we provide this training on a rotational basis of every two to three years. Mike's crew that comes out and does this training, he will take your policy, provide it to him ahead of time, he'll take your policy, and he'll deliver the harassment training based on Montague County's policy. So it will be tailored to you. Again, we will rotate people in and out and spend whatever time that you need. So all you have to do is contact me, contact Mike, contact the pool. Mike does the scheduling for that, and we can get you set up. And then the last one that I want to mention, most of, not most, a good percentage of your claims will come from your law enforcement side, and that's to be expected. They are facing the most risk. They are out there on the roads. They have probably the majority of your county automobile fleet. So that's, we would expect that. And we've spent a lot of time and effort over the years of putting together a great law enforcement training package. Deputy sheriffs are required in West Virginia to have 16 hours of training every two years. We have worked with Chuck Sadler in Charleston, and our training is approved for 14 of those hours. So we can provide the continuing education up to 14 hours, and we're working on the other two in the near future. But we come to you. They don't have to leave the county. We can do it in rounds. You can't take them all off the street. We understand that. And we have former law enforcement who does a good majority of that training. So he knows what they face, and he's passionate. I've sat through some of that training. He's passionate about what he does. And of course, he cares about insurance, but he cares most about the deputies themselves and their lives and protecting them, and the public at large when they're out there trying to do their job. So he's great at it. Included in that is defensive driving training, and that includes a driving simulator that they bring and hook up to your own county cruisers and put you in the seat and put the goggles on you. Always encourage the other elected officials to come and be a part of that, or any other county employees who drive county vehicles. That might be your EMS. We had someone ask about inviting their VFD folks to that defensive driving. We work with the member county. If it's something you want to do, we'll work with you to do that. We feel that, you know, it has an effect on county government, and if we can help you minimize your risk. We've had a couple of large counties who wanted to invite maybe some of their very small municipal police officers. Maybe they have one or two. They wanted to invite them over for the training while they were there, providing it for the county, and we'll do that, too. Those folks have to all work together. So we'll work with you to make it work for you and spend as much time as we need to in the county, no cost to the county. That's an important message for me, having worked with you all these years, to make sure that you realize they'll come to you, and it's to help you manage your risk in the Risk Pool, no additional expense. So that's the message I want to deliver, and then to say, and I've brought my cards that have my new number. My old one still works, by the way, because it's my personal number, and you're welcome to call it. Believe it or not, I've had a few commissioners call me on it and say, oh, I thought I was calling the association. But at any rate, I'll give you my, I'll leave my card with you. Do you have any questions for me about the pool, any concerns, any problems with the way it works, the online program, filing the claims?
I have no complaint. I'm the one that takes care of all of that, and I have absolutely no complaints.
Wonderful. Well, we want to be in touch. We don't want to darken your door too often and take you away from county business, but we want to be available anytime you need us. And you'll probably see me out in front of your commission two, three times a year just to be in contact and see if there's anything we're missing or anything you need. If you think of any kind of training that you think, boy, this would really help us manage some of our risk, you're probably not the only county, and if it's something that we don't already have, then we're always putting together new things, whatever the county's needs. So if you come up with any, and Tom, I'll follow up on our conversation earlier, the question, and get back with you. But if you have any other questions, feel free to give me a shout, and yes.
Vivian, quick question.
Sure.
I'm glad to hear you're taking on the VFDs.
Yes.
That will be a big help to the volunteer fire departments in our area and across the state. Have you guys ever considered like the BOEs, the Board of Education?
I think we have looked into it, and we are expanding slowly but surely. There are some restrictions with the BOEs that by law, there's, I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head whether it's their property casualty or it's their workers' comp. One or the other is required, I think, to be with BRIM by law. But there are some restrictions and some things to consider. But, yeah, we are, we are looking at other local government entities continuously.
And since Mon County's just been with you for a year, and it's been wonderful, I'm glad that we've finally taken the step and are with the Risk Pool. Our other elected officials may not be aware of the training, so opportunities to come and talk to us, and if you schedule those ahead of time, we'll get the elected officials there so they're aware of the training, specifically the sheriff's office. He's aware that, hey, you can provide 14 to 16 hours that he's required to provide. You know, he needs to think of those things, especially as we're starting to enter into budget time next, you know, in the next couple of months, so.
We're willing to be here anytime that you would like to have us, and we'll show up. I'll bring some of my crew with me that might have more specifics. Mike Rezak does a lot of the training and scheduling it, and Mike and I travel together. Steve and I travel together, and I'm the boots-on-the-ground in West Virginia, but those guys are still here quite often. So at any rate, yeah, any, just give me a shout, and we want to be back as much as we can be helpful. We don't want to be a pain, but we want to be here whenever you need us.
Well, that's the kind of point I make. We haven't been with you that long, so you have to be a pain for a while before we get used to your services. So feel free to keep in contact with Renata, and it's wonderful to continue working with you.
You will. Absolutely.
Did you want to bring the cards up, say?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will certainly do. And it's got my new email address and my new cell phone number. And please just let me know if you need me. And thank you for the impromptu opportunity.
Well, welcome. Well, glad that you came up.
Yep. Good deal. Thank you.
We will do grants. Colin Kuhn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a request for reimbursement. It's for the Community Development Block Grant for October for MAYSP in the amount of $1,694.57. And then due to today being Wednesday, I have had Tom sign the Governor's Highway Safety Program on Safe Communities in the amount of $728.31. Click at our ticket in the amount of $1,650.87. And impaired driving in the amount of $2,664.47. So, that I could go to Charleston today.
Move for approval for the president to sign.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Correspondents, we just have a financial statement, a levy fund for Mountaineer United Soccer Club. Do we have anything else?
Yes. A couple other items came in the mail. Received a letter from the West Virginia Land Stewardship Corporation. They are notifying the commission that there is some property in the Morgantown Industrial Park owned by Enroute Properties, which is Mr. Adrian's company. And they are deeding this property over to the conservation, or I'm sorry, the Stewardship Corporation. I believe it's to do some remediation on the site so they can use it for future development. Once it is completed, that property will then be deeded back to Enroute Properties. But it's just a notification of that. Received a letter from Ryan Simonton, the city attorney. And this is a copy of the certificate and ordinance reflecting the city's annexation of the reference territory to the city of Morgantown. It is property that is on Liberty Street, parcel 15 of Tax Map 8B. And it was a petition that these landowners filed with the city of Morgantown to, I guess, half of their property was in, half of it was out. So, they want to be all in. So, they filed a petition and the city has passed it. And of course, you all have to confirm it. So, I'm not sure. I assume you would want this.
Just place it on the agenda.
The next agenda. Okay. We also received a letter from Melissa Wiles, who is the director of Bow Park. And this is just a letter of support regarding the recreation and trails levy that they have agreed to. They've agreed to the amount apparently and they've just sent a letter of support. And I have it if you all would want to read it.
Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
Go into new business along that same line. To consider recommendation by Amy Hedic, Chestnut Ridge Park Superintendent regarding notice of bids 2020 MCC CRP 001 and 2020 MCC CRP 002 for a sled hill lift, three-phase generator and snowmaking machine. And good morning.
I'm glad you read those bid numbers. Good morning. I looked over these bids and made preliminary contact with the companies. The specs all match what we were looking for. And they are both, they're willing to work together to add the receptacle to the tow cable so it can be plugged into the generator that comes with the snow machine. And so, I recommend that you approve it.
Move for approval. Second.
Poppy moves in second. Do we need to put the monetary on it?
Do I need to say?
Since we did it before, but I didn't know.
If you want to, it's not bad. It's fine.
Yeah, just in case someone says we didn't do it.
So, for the HKD Super Blizzard Snowmaker with Halo and the three-phase generator and installation tubing, that came out to $118,740. There's also training and delivery in that. And then from SunKid for the SunKid Comfort Star Lift Tow Rope Delivery Training and an Installation Advisor, that came out to $48,350.
And just for clarification, these are being paid for?
By the levy.
With the $26 Parks and Trails levy.
Yeah, so it's important people know that these are improvements we have made via the levy. And someone did ask me a question. Whenever you have this tubing run and setup, is there a fee?
There is not a fee if somebody just wants to come and sled and they have their own equipment. We do have rental equipment and then we do sell things like hot chocolate. But they don't have to buy anything if they don't want to.
But you rent tubes?
We do rent tubes. We have a limited number. Busy days, we tend to run out. But we do rent tubes, sleds, sell hot chocolate. But.
Okay. No, I think that's important. That was an important question. Somebody asked this. I honestly don't know. I didn't think there was a charge. So, if you show up with your own tube and you can.
You show up in your own tube. You can sled on the hill until dark and you can warm up in the warming hut?
Right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Do you have a projected date? Were you looking at next year? Because we don't know when we're getting this in.
Yeah. For the snow machine and generator, he said that he could do his best to get it before Christmas.
Really?
Yeah. That's the easy part because there's not much installation. For the tow rope, we do need to set concrete anchors. They were going to send us specs. The passes on to Bobby Doyle as soon as I get them. I'm thinking, just being really conservative and realistic, that may not happen until next year because of frozen ground and everything. But the snowmaker will be here.
And just for the public to know that you had mentioned that what part of the things that you wanted was that is portable. So theoretically, it could be taken to the other two parks for a small little slide for the communities out there. And that's one of the things we're excited about.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Put these back.
Yes.
Yeah. Do we have any other new business?
Yeah, I just have one item.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
We have an application for use of the courthouse.
Oh, wait, wait. We did vote. Did we vote on that or not?
I don't think.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. I couldn't remember. Yeah, sorry.
We have an application for use of the courthouse square. The group is requesting, the group that is requesting is Kerida's House. And the name of the event is the World AIDS Day Vigil. And that will be on December the first from 5:00 to 7:30.
Move for approval. Second.
Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else?
Yes, I just have one item. A while back in work session, we talked about changing life insurance companies for the employees.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I had a conference call on Monday to finalize all of that. So, we have the final paperwork that needs to be signed. So, you guys just need to approve that. And it's, the rates are exactly the same. The benefits are slightly better. It's a, it goes from a, the dependent life, it goes from a $5,000 policy to a $10,000 policy with, for no additional.
So, can we put that on the agenda next week? Or do we need to do it this week?
I would prefer if you would. I know it's not on the agenda, but we needed to implement that by December 1. And in order for Tanya to be able to have time to process everything and then do the implementation with ADP, it would need to be done today.
Okay. That's fine. Since we already discussed it, yeah. Do you have a motion?
Approve.
Second. Poppy moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Reports from elected officials. Any elected officials want to? I see you there. You don't have to. Okay. Reports from the county commissioners. Sean?
Yeah, mine will be a quick report. Since last meeting, last Thursday, I had a red team meeting, which was the first meeting we've had since the announcement of the FAA approval of the BCA and REA. So, we quickly realized that we're going to need to increase the intensity of those meetings to probably two, every two weeks. But there's a lot going on and our future meetings have to be longer. Then after that, I had Development Authority meeting. And after that, I had Morgantown Economic Partnership meeting. Friday, we had our extension building walkthrough. On Monday, we had, Renetta and I had a conference call with our Fleet Management Services vendor. Yesterday, I had breakfast with, my monthly breakfast with the Board of Education President and Joe Statler and former superintendent Frank Tavano. We had our extension building meeting and our, last night, I went to the Fire Association meeting. And I don't get to go to too many of those because Ed goes to those and it's, you know, we got to be careful about two of us attending any events. But it is, I do enjoy going and having bowl of chili with the guys. It's a great group that's, of course, they're all volunteer organizations that are doing things for this county. That's why I'm happy to hear that they're, the Board of Risk is considering bringing, or going to be bringing, make insurance an option for those organizations. I did talk to the group last night, kind of on behalf of the State Auditor's Office. I talked to Jay Waybright yesterday. He's the Auditor's Chief of Staff, just to get some information regarding the auditing process that's going to come into effect by the end of this year for the volunteer fire departments. And right now, those details are being worked out. The Auditor's Office has a requirement to perform so many audits a year. With this change in legislation, they've taken on 400 more entities that they're responsible for auditing. So, they don't have to audit those, all of those every year. There's a certain amount that, a sample that would be acceptable. But it has caused some concern amongst these volunteer fire departments about subject, being subject to an audit. So, I ease their concerns that it's not a full audit. It's something that really isn't going to cost them anything because the Auditor's Office is building a web-based application where they'll go and they'll answer basic, plug in basic financial information, you know, expenses, revenues. And it's all going to be customized across the whole state. So, I appreciate everything the Auditor's Office is doing to make this, this challenge that they've taken on or have been handed easier on the entities that it affects in the field because they need, you know, they need to worry more about, you know, having enough volunteers to actually go out to runs and stuff like that. They shouldn't have to be worrying about insurance and audits and those type of things. So, having said that, that's all I have.
Last Thursday, it was my privilege to represent commission and address the Leadership Mon program that is done on a volunteer basis. But, you know, it's really a great program. I am a proud graduate of it. Friday, we did have our extension building walkthrough. Saturday, I did attend the 4H All-Stars. They had their welcoming new initiates into this group. Their motto is service, which I'm also a member. Last night, it was the monthly meeting of the Firemen's Association that I asked Commissioner Shakura to please come because for me to try and explain some of the things of auditing would probably be remiss, bring the expert. So, he gave a short dissertation as he spoke and it was well-received. And right before that, it was my privilege to attend the first 4H Montague County Leaders Association meeting in our new Montague County Extension Services and 4H Center. They were well, they were very happy with what they have and what they hope to do in the future in this building. Thank you.
I want to start out with a positive note. I sent a personal letter to Burb White. For those of you who now know, the DOH paved University Avenue by Deckers Creek, which has been for two years. We've been asking that and they did a great job. And they didn't do just the puddles. They paved the entire thing. And they're also now on Pineview Drive, which we have been requesting for years. So, again, I wanted to thank them for that and look forward to our meeting on Friday.
And coming into town.
Yes, and coming to town. So, all coming in.
From Brockway.
Yes. So, it's, there have been some major changes and hopefully we can keep moving forward. I'll say positively. Unfortunately, I attended a meeting Thursday evening. Barbara Fleischer called me, emergency meeting. I represented the county commission. The National Youth Sports Program is being slashed enormously. And basically, next summer or this summer, it probably will not happen. There were 202 programs or down to two programs. We still have one. So, we were trying to come up with some sort of a program to help for those families and children during that time. As soon as I find out more, I will get you more information. And finally, Friday, I want to thank the county commissioners for supporting me on this. We had several business owners come before us about the concerns in the downtown area. I was fortunate to have a conversation and work with Rachel Cohen, who is the Director of the West Virginia Coalition and Homelessness. And on Friday, at 8:30 to 10 o'clock in these chambers, we have a daunting task that we're going to try and do what's called a home for the holiday, where we're going to try and get 15 homeless households, family members into 15 apartments or houses. We have a very eclectic group of 40 individuals coming to work for 75 minutes. I'm very excited and nervous, but I think it's a start. And I want to thank the commissioners for supporting me on this. With that.
Move to adjourn.
I forgot. We didn't even mention Friday, we're going to Charleston.
Oh, yes.
Have our meeting.
We are going to, yeah. Somebody want to mention? Ed, since you are the one who.
Well, we did request an invitation. We were sent that invitation. So, all three commissioners and Joe Statler will be going to Charleston. We will leave here in the morning and we have a scheduled meeting at 10 o'clock. We did send.
Well, 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock, excuse me. Yes. And we did send those issues that we wish to address so that it wouldn't feel, they would not feel like they were being ambushed by us. It's not our intent. Our intent is to have a good, meaningful discussion as to what we can expect really in Montague County and North Central West Virginia in the future.
So, with that.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we'll be going. Thank you.
Thank you.